Mr. Gerber is on vacation, Dr. Miller as well, Mrs. Malley is at work for Monday. Mrs. Menadell?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Oakley? Mr. Thor is on vacation, Mr. Bonjemani?
Present.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Farber is present. Mr. Black?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the notes of the meeting, happening to be distributed by Secretary Harvey Seck 2018. We do not leave for a second session this evening. Do we have... So the minutes, let me take the minutes off.
Please.
Move the second.
Thank you.
Move by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Oakley, sir. May I take that round?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Miller, sir.
Yes, I'm with you, sir.
You can take it around.
Mrs. Oakley, sir.
Yes.
Mrs. Menadell?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjemani?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Minutes, our group of votes in favor, none opposed. It is now correspondence the board has received will be noted for the record, these files for the president of the Congress. President of the Board, Mr. Timothy O'Brien, your family, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen, everybody. I will be passing on more of the time tonight to our students. First of all.
Sure, thank you, good evening. Just briefly, while it's summer and we like to do our business and get back to our families and other activities, I do just want to make sure that our board and community is fully aware that while it may be summertime for many of our students and staff, there's a lot happening. We are entering our final week of ESY, had the opportunity to visit this past week, what a beautiful program that this calendar and all folks from our people's service department are providing for our students. It's absolutely a pleasure to see so many kids engaged in activities and having a meaningful, enriching summer experience. So I just wanted to share that we have a prayer robust program happening at Memorial School and things are going well. Miss Angell continues to make the migration website happening, moving smoothly, always a glitch when you migrate that much data over and each and every time this is going to bump, I think it's been flapping rather quickly. So we're pleased certainly with our partners at Edly and the work that's happening under Miss Angell's direction along with the staff that's been real great faculty, probably in the room and we'll, you know, say thank you to them at a later meeting. I'm really excited about what the website can offer and I know that Mr. Bonjemani and I will be featuring that along with Miss Angell in an upcoming community interaction meeting. The other things that are happening, I want to thank our custodial staff, the buildings are coming together so quickly and so wonderfully, they are working truly with the interest of kids in mind and the buildings are starting to shine up, getting ready for day one, which is only around the corner. Mr. Sanisak is heading up our summer projects and there's been a lot of work happening, creating of parking lots and solar panels going on rooms, but it's part of our recent program. So I want to thank the fine folks that Mr. Sanisak works with and Mr. Coolidge and Mr. Hobbie who's here along with Jimmy Raffler are really getting the buildings and projects ready for opening. So just a quick update, sir, about the happenings this summer because, you know, while everyone's all swimming and having fun at the beach hopefully, how the towns and public schools get ready for a fantastic opening and I thought the community and our board would be most interested in that update. So thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Time for the main and board of the agenda, please.
Good, very well. I believe you've...
Start, dear man.
Yes. I believe that Mr. Bonjemani, you will be giving us a report with meditation.
I will. Education committee met on July 31st. There were a couple of items talked about, a quick little update. We had presentation in sort of us about the students entering sixth grade algebra September will now have a web-based program that they can use, it's through the schoolology account to help with transition. It's an online learning module, it's optional, it's not graded, but it certainly helps provide the children with an opportunity during the summer to continue to build their skills, looking to advance at their own pace. We talked about placement criteria, this was very interesting. Mr. Preston went into great detail on that, that every year there's a lot of evaluation placed, a lot of effort placed on the evaluation, placement criteria for mathematics so that we can provide our students with the most rigorous but attainable opportunities. Students carefully placed in courses so they're challenged appropriately. Certainly don't want to see them over-challenged, we don't want them to feel like they failed or don't succeed. Free-year gap is looked at, it includes the STAR standards, STAR custom, which is a How Developed Program, trimester grade, state criteria recommendations, these four points are then looked at to see where we think that the student, where administration thinks a student would fit in in terms of their next program and especially trying not to put them in the outdoor program if it's going to be unsuccessful for them. Give them the opportunity to make sure they're in the right program to build their skills, work on their skills and succeed. Those four, those four measures that I talked about have seemed to be a pretty effective measurement in terms of success, so we heard about that and we approved that. Supervisory roles with some of the movements that have been happening in terms of principals and vice principals, a new supervisory assignment sheet was handed out, was available to all board members on SharePoint and we discussed that and again, that was information, nothing we had to approve, that's administration's appointment. Professional learning plan, according to New Jersey administrative code, the district professional learning plan must presented, be presented to board for review for fiscal impact in that, again, was shared with board through board docs to review the plan, specific to page two, statement of financial priorities for professional learning because in the state budget that was introduced, there might be some restraints, but that's continually being looked at and those elements and that plan will be included in the strategic plan as we move forward with the strategic plan next year. Comprehensive equity in plan of annual statement of assurance, this subject has to be presented every year, it has to be approved every year. Really, the comprehensive equity plan is the same one that we've been doing for a couple of years now, it doesn't have to get revisited until 19, at that time, a new plan will be developed and again, will also be something tying with the strategic planning. There was a conversation in regards to substitutes and committee heard the information and just moved to the end, at the beginning, I will say that it's kind of further finance, but there was a conversation in terms of substitutes and we know that substitutes are very difficult to find, there is always a struggle to make sure you have the appropriate substitutes. So a plan was discussed, certainly not approved because we know it has to go to finance. Folks discussed that possibly what we want to do is in each of the schools, have a permanent sub for that school, so for that day you know you're going to Memorial, that day you know you're going to do there. There's always going to be work for them there. In terms of financial impact, when you think about the difference between when you pay a teacher to take that assignment, if you don't have a sub for the day, the subs that would be considered for this are, will be certified teachers, will be invited to do things like go to professional learning opportunities that the district has, it'll give the district an opportunity to really make sure that they fit into the culture and community of that school and education board, Mr. Bridge, I think. District has launched a new website, as Mr. Sol was saying, and we will be continuing to look at that. We talked about the minutes of molesting and they were approved and with that, shall be answering questions, anybody?
I have a comment.
Please.
I live like the idea of professional development and being able to focus on experienced teachers as substitutes because having started off with a per diem sub, in fact, in the day, I know how difficult it can be walking through the classroom and not have the ability to integrate into the class activities in terms of being a principal, so that will give, I think, advantage for our students because, you know, every day without a regular teacher is not challenging, I mean, you've lost or gained 10, 20 days to get a substitute.
And there's also the, just the, the fact that we know that sometimes subs when they walk into a place are not viewed as, well, it's not a teacher, it's a sub. But if they know that this person is in this school every day and carries a little bit more gravitas, a little bit more weight, I think it would certainly be helpful, I'll say the same thing you said, I was very much a favorite, having my question, permanent sub in the building house teaching app, so I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Is it a person that would be like a salary?
No, it wouldn't be salary, it would be sub rate. We were talking about the possibility of, and again, this has to go to finance, this is just the conversation took place. We were talking about the possibility of those subs being offered maybe in touch more than the average sub is.
Wait, wait, 20 days is only half a day, come out or...
We were talking about the fact that after, after 20 days or so, so they...
Any, 40 days becomes a permanent sub, Mr. Sol, go ahead. I see you reaching for the mic.
Yeah, so, good question, Ms. Oakley. So we're looking, to answer your first question is, we're looking to resentify their pay above the regular in-house up. The 20-day, 20-day conversations about if they're assigned to a particular...
Right.
These still would be per diem in their role within that building. The perfect example is Miss Sals, the woman we see before you for our wife, every TSA, many of you may not realize that she's a substitute that we assign to middle school law regularly, every single day, she does it for the same rate as the regular sub, she's never absent, middle school law knows when this person out, they have their first sub ready. Sub coverage has been an issue across the county and across the state. We think by providing opportunities for individuals to be randomly assigned to a building will be able to attract our first quart of 12 subs that have no rules, no security and security processes inside now and we think it's a win-win, so there's no certification issue for the 20 and 40-day rule because it's still a alternating position.
And you...
It's only if they have three days, that would make sense to keep them there.
And either, is it an insurance thing or that doesn't matter?
They would not be received, they would still be working fewer, plus the seasonality and Ryan can speak to that, he's probably a little bit...
You got it, Ross.
No, I have to take...
Most of these are summer meetings, sir.
But it's a great idea, we have the same thing at school where we'll put in daily sub for every day just to make sure that there's a body, at least one somewhere because they are tough to get.
You know, the thing I really like the most about it is the ability to have a better quality discussion, if they are familiar with the curriculum, if they're familiar with the methodology, because, you know, when you look at how much preparation and time do our teachers go in terms of collaboration and professional development to enhance their skills and expect someone walking off the street, you know, relatively unprepared and be able to live up to that and not have any expectations on the list, but if you have a substitute coming back again, I'm just curious, how many, how many, would this be one per school?
So the conversation was rolling out as one per school, to see where that goes. Again, we had sub coverage issues that so many school districts have had this year and in recent years, so the concept was, let's not overbuild it, let's start and then if we need, and it's working, we want to look at interesting, if we could do that, but again, we want to go through the proper community process and we think it could be beneficial. Obviously, if we're inviting them to professional learning, they're to be retarded because they're right in the building, there's another bill that, right, we have to pay them for their time, their day's pay, but that could be a great investment and it could offset other costs like security coverage from someone's app, right? So if we don't have a position company, we use teaching on that prep period and we pay them, that combined, so it would be plus setting across, it would be most likely a change of dollars.
It's also an investment two ways too, because it's an investment for that person taking the position this day or learning certain skills, for example, I mean, the Stanford professional learning academies, if you've had a couple of, I mean, for those, for those subs to have the opportunity to attend those, it's going to benefit them, especially whether for consideration for this district has some point or for the future somewhere else. That includes education with two just short things. Mr. Moore and I both had the opportunity to attend leadership program by NJSPA last week. The main topic really was effective communication and I thought there were a number of interesting points that were talked about by different leaders from different districts across the state, a lot of things that he and I had more conversation, talked a lot, that we will continue to that conversation through community interaction, see what we can work on through there. The other thing was just a side note, today I have to go to the final day presentation for camp convention, which is right here in the next room, about 80 students attended. I have to tell you, it was great to see students from our district, even some of the high school students who had gone through our programs in terms of STEM training and TSA and other things being helping in terms of leaders and the excitement on the students' faces who attended and the parents from the students that have showed them the projects they've been working on all week, so it was good, very cool.
Thank you, sir.
Miller? Finance, I've not met, our next meeting is next Thursday, the 16th, at 7:00 in the board office and on August 1st, I attended the district's safety strategy update for school, we believe that Mr. Moore gave for our slide of threes and our school principals. It was an excellent presentation, they did a really great job.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I'll be attending. I got anything, you want to leave some comments?
Something on the board, I'm hoping to activate the general school starts and...
Absolutely.
...
Right, awesome, great, thank you. Okay, I believe that concludes our...
Includes reports, it's time for the first public comment, if I may open that, sir. Whereas our patch reported education recognizes the comments will be public, may last 45 minutes, the comments will be concluded according to the Bible 164.1. The officer will respect the time, the board will be present and the board will be present to the O'Brien. May the floor be open for public comments. See you, Doc.
Good jokes, sir. How long, uh, the same thing?
Yes, Charles Day, PAY, Trichin, I just wanted, I heard something online about the
food service people getting hired by Ermark, I just wanted to ask you guys if there's any truth to that.
Yes, actually, in our last board meeting, we had a motion which resulted in privatization of our food service. We slept out.
Oh, no, but I guess somebody online said that people that work already for the district were hired by Ermark. I think Mr. Sanisak, you want to disagree with our...
One of the things that we included in our RFP when we went out for consideration on the competitive contracting was what their transition would be and how they would encourage and entice our staff and although I can't speak specifically of the 27 that were not retired that were offered so far, I believe 19 have accepted, so.
Thank you.
Other comments this time?
I...
See you, Doc, may the floor be closed?
Close.
So we have one discussion I have this evening?
Yes.
Mr. Miller, you have a floor? Yes. As you know, the first reading this evening is a change in our HIB policy that we have. The state board of education changed, I believe, July 1st to allow us to, principals to do the investigation of the HIBs and... But Miss Cal, just update, I felt that the community should feel that, you know, it is a big change in our policy, if you just let chat out.
So there were, actually, the law changed and we were waiting for guidance from the Department of Ed on how to implement the new changes to the law, we haven't gotten that yet, however, because we have to have a new policy in place for September 1, our policy, our policy company has given us some suggested language that will match what the changes in the law are with the expectation that once we get the guidance from the DOE, we're probably going to have to update it again because there are certain things that they might give us a little more detail on, but the main changes at this point to the policy, there are three main ones. One, that the principal will have a discretion to move forward with an investigation, so if a report is made and it's pretty clear to the principal in the discussion of the circumstances that, for instance, there's absolutely no distinguishing characteristic that there has to be under the law, then they are allowed not to put that through to a full investigation. Of course, if the behavior was poor conduct, they would certainly address the poor conduct anyway, but it might not go to a full investigation because there was clearly no distinguishing characteristic involved in the situation that would make it bullying by definition of the law. So that was the one change. Another change is that now the district has to do an investigation for students that attend approved private schools for the disabled, so if it happens on the way to the school or at an event sponsored, not actually within the walls of the approved private school for the disabled, the sending district actually has to go out and conduct the investigation, which is going to be somewhat interesting and we would probably have to do it depending on who's involved in the offense, do it in collaboration with the other district, the anti-bullying specialist from another district if the child involved in it was from that district, so that's another thing that we had to put in place there. The last one, oh, is the reporting to parents, when you call the parents to say that you're investigating a HIB, that you would be able to let them know what the distinguishing characteristic that was involved with it is before you conduct the investigation. So those are the three main things at this point, but again, as you said, we have to have something in place by September 1, but we do expect that there will be an additional revision once we get some of the guidance from the state, so.
Can I make a follow-up, sir? So the possible concept when we spoke to leadership was to develop a process in-house that leads the principal to the determination of whether or not to take it as HIB or to treat it strictly code of conduct. Of course, the issue is addressed, we know that. Once we've done that, we feel that we, there has been quite a few cases of HIB allegations that have led to lengthy investigations, even when the onset of the, of the process, we were aware that there was not a distinguishing characteristic, we were also aware that bad behavior, we had to take care of that. The thought process here of giving this, this ability to have extensions to free up time so that we're better observing our students, our bodies house, or the ABS aren't spending two and a half days to do with seven people on a case that we know there is no distinguishing characteristic for and rather better utilize their time to do interventions and remediation of students that hopefully yield fewer incidents. So we think it would allow time better spent if in fact we do this properly. I don't think for a second that it's, oh, we want to investigate something, we want a process in place so that every HIB that is reported and is worthy of investigation is fully investigated.
And when we spoke to the principals, because we did discuss this at length with leadership team, you know, they also are aware that if they're not certain or have the least bit of a question, they're going to investigate it because they're, they're not going to say no, it doesn't fit, if they really aren't totally sure. So also, there's a process in there, if the parent, if the parent does not agree, the parent can appeal to the board, the decision not to investigate and if the board decides that it should have been investigated, then an investigation will take place. So there is a process for parents as well who aren't satisfied with the decision of the principal, however, our principals did state that even during the initial conversation, if they feel like the parent doesn't understand the stance they're taking about not investigating, that they most likely would do the investigation just because it seems like it would be simpler all the way around to go ahead and do it rather than go through a huge process. So that's that one. And just briefly, because Mr. Gerber wasn't here to do a review of the policies that we had done at the last policy committee meeting and some of them are on the agenda tonight and I know you've had time to look at those, but we did put forth one for athletic competition, the policy and regulation, the main thing in that one was just that they added cheerleading to the definition of athletes, the cheerleaders were added in and that we have to go, distribute a cardiac pamphlet to everyone participating in sports, including the cheerleaders and an opioid fact sheet and that was the major change to that policy. In the student suicide prevention policy, there's an addition there about the people who would scream at the child before they may have to go out to see further help and that would be their counselor, social worker or a school psychologist and also that we would have the right to require medical clearance from the physician that the child went and saw before they are to return to school. So those are the main changes there. Of course, you can see all of it because it's involved, but I just wanted to go over the highlights there. In the student smoking policy, there were changes there to make sure that it was clear that it included vaping and our process for when a child is caught with the possession of a vaping device, we were very clear about our process there in the policy, that all students who are found to have a vaping device would, would end up having the device tested and also have to go out for drug testing because it's difficult to know what actually was in that device, so that's that one. There's a change in the physical restraint for students with disabilities, in terms of that one, most everything that's in there is a process we followed anyway and I do believe there's a chance that there could be an additional update to this as well, but we had to have the first round of updates in place, so that's on for tonight. And the last one was on reporting potentially missing or abused children and the only change in there is that it removed suicide reporting from that policy because the suicide reporting that you have to report to the state is now in the suicide policy, so rather than have it live in both places, they put it with the suicide policy where it truly belongs. So, okay, you're very welcome.
And thank you, Mr. Sol, for the clarification on that. You know, the board knows that very well, that's why your team works very, very carefully to work on every issue around, they are children and they're having difficulties with each other, interaction with anything else, we know there's a thorough process and it is a part of that, but it's not the only one, it's only one piece and I know you folks were tired of it to offer it, they have the opportunity to grow and learn from the board, people who are essentially, if you do, then you do the whole, it's an opportunity for the board to grow and learn, so thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.
All right, so maybe further, Mr. Sanisak.
If there are further discussions, it's time for the consent agenda.
Yes, need a motion? Move it, okay.
Second. Who's moving?
It's back down.
Move by Mr. Menadell.
Hold it.
Move by Mr. Oakley.
Hold it.
Second by Mr. Miller, or Mr. Bonjemani? Mr. Bonjemani? We are fully...
I would like to pull from the agenda 3017 and read into the agenda 6003, the name
of three entity services making change in jury. Mr. Reddell?
I'm all, sir. Mr. Sanisak, I'm sorry, that's a question.
Yes, respectfully, I'm looking for the number. Yes, respectfully, I'm looking for the number, the vice president, the vice principal one, if you will, for a second.
Four thousand fifteen and...
No, this, this is already with...
No, Mr. Gray. We have, that's all?
Well, there's fifteen, which deals with Mr. Gray, in terms of the...
Oh, the sub rat.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was... Right.
Okay. Fifteen.
That was while he was still in vice.
That will be unable to pass this, because the money is staying.
Yeah, well, I'm...
So, twenty seconds. So, when that comes out, I'm sorry, Mr. Gray.
Three thousand fifteen.
So full three thousand fifteen, and with that, I can take it from there. With your permission, sir. Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Mr. Von der Badi?
Yes.
Mr. Sanisak? Yes, day one. Oh, we need, it wasn't enough. Yes, we need that, and that, oh, and take a poll, because you didn't, we didn't decide enough. It should be, and I will cover that in a moment. Mrs. May, Adam?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The agenda with the deletions and the reading, and the agenda with the deletions and the reading, and the agenda approved by those, they're not opposed. Going forward, I'd just like to make an announcement that we are going to post on the web, that the agenda now, we have a live agenda around the PDF, and we'll be updating it up until three o'clock of the board meeting day. So that should eliminate a lot of the readings and our video things. But we'll put it out most for the public, that the agenda may change between Friday and, or whatever date it's posted, and the actual meeting day. So that should, should make it more current, now we have a lot of...
Do you have the ability to push the agenda, people who subscribe to our system?
I'm not sure about that, we'll look into it, because it's, it's embedded within Board docs, so we have to see how that functions within EDLEO.
The only thing I thought so, is people who subscribe to that, they can just...
They can be helped, they can try.
Worry about missing somebody that wanted, and we have some on that.
Absolutely. It is now time for the second public comment, if I may, sir?
Yes.
Whereas our patch for investigation, terms of comments, may last forty-five minutes, they will be conducted in accordance with its Bible and may live in limited degree of seats, the officer will be President Morris, Mr. Timmy and Brian, for the public comments at this time.
The floor is closed. Do you have any more motion?
Val is not here, it could be your only. You can't drop it out.
So they're going to make it to the honors. Push it, push it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.